Good evening, everyone. Hi.
Take out your gavel.
There we go. Hi, everyone.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to get started. The time is 7:07, and we are here for the regular session, the open session of the City Council meeting.
And before we get started, may I have everyone who is able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, and I will now read our statement of land acknowledgement. The City of Culver City formally acknowledges that the land we inhabit today is the ancestral land of indigenous peoples who have lived here for millennia. The City of Culver City honors the Gabrielino people, past, present, and future, and recognizes their enduring connection to this land as its original caretakers. We are committed to supporting and uplifting the Gabrielino people and to fostering a deeper understanding of the histories and identities of all indigenous peoples in this region. We encourage all residents and visitors to join us in respecting and caring for this land. The City affirms its support for the rights of these indigenous communities and for the preservation of their cultural legacies. Okay, and there is nothing to report out of closed session. And we will start asking if there are any reports from the staff or committees, commissions, or boards?
We do not.
Okay, wonderful. And traditionally, we go around to see if there are any comments or reports from my colleagues. Councilmember Fish, do you have anything?
I have one quick thing, well, two, actually. Thank you to the Downtown Business Association volunteers for a fabulous holiday tree lighting sledtacular. Saw all my colleagues there. It was a fabulous way to ring in the season. I also just wanted to quickly share that Hanukkah is coming up. Happy Hanukkah. Christmas is also coming up. Merry Christmas. Culver City Chabad is having their annual menorah lighting on Sunday, December 14, at 4:30 p.m. at the Culver Steps, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with them, inviting all of you to do this, to come out and join us. And I'm also co-hosting a Hanukkah celebration Thursday, December 18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Wonderful Industry Cafe and Jazz. All are welcome. It'll be a festival of lights, ladkeys, and live jazz. And I want to thank our growing list of co-hosts for all their help, and it'll be a family-friendly space open to all ages and backgrounds, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Fisch?
Thursday, the 18th.
Thursday, the 18th. Councilmember Fisch? Okay, Councilmember Fisch. Vice Mayor, last time I'll say it. Okay. Great. Yeah, incredible festive occasion last weekend with the tree lighting ceremony. It was incredible seeing our community out and support, and of course, we really shined a light on our students and their talents, so we appreciate that very much, and for the volunteers and the Downtown Business Association for putting that on, thank you. Incredible, as always. Okay, we will go on to public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any comment cards?
We do indeed, and these are for items not on the agenda. And as we line everyone up, I will read our statement regarding hate speech. Members of the public have a right to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. However, this council strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Culver City prides itself on its diverse community and inclusion of all persons. We are committed to creating a safe space in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and respected.
How many speakers do we have?
We have 12 speakers signed up.
Okay, yeah, 90 seconds, please.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call all of our speakers, so you can get prepared. First up, we have Philip Lillyfeld, Monica Richardson, Denise Brady, Gabe Holbert, Rebecca Rona, Brian Sanders, Marcy Bond, Melissa Sanders, Patrick Godinez, Andrew Weisman, Richard Burns, and Indy Rishi Singh.
I'm Philip Lillyfeld. I'm on the give-ins. January, 12th, my time.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Philip Yootz is time. Our next speaker is Monica Richardson, followed by Denise Brady.
Hi, good evening. I'm here on behalf of the young girls and teens and women in the bathroom at the Culver Plunge. We would like, there's 19 million females in California. We've seen men come into our bathroom, it's not the bathroom, into the shower, naked. It's really easy for me to see that these are men. These are not women. There are two genders, male and female. So there are seven-year-old and 12-year-old girls from the French school that are coming in there. There are women that are now no longer changing, like, this is a shower, where women were naked, okay? And so we don't want guys with a penis coming into our locker room. So we have the right for people, for protection, equal protection under the law. So when you have three trans guys, and you have hundreds or thousands of women, and you are protecting three people, we have equal protection under the law. So we would like you to respect women, which, by the way, none of you would be here without us. So no one here would be here without women. Women have put up with crap for maybe 1,800 years, and we finally started to get empowered. And, you know, a couple of you talk at the beginning of this meeting constantly about gender. There are other people here. We all respect whether I'm heterosexual or not, but it should not become a big deal, but it is when you have men with penises coming into the plunge locker room, in the shower, where people are naked.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Denise Brady, followed by Gabe Holbert.
Councilmembers, I'll do the best to get through this. I've prepared like a three-minute thing, but I know we have 90 seconds, so thank you for letting me speak today. I appreciate you. Just following up from Monica, I'm a regular swimmer at the plunge, and I just want to say that I was there. I was there the first week of May this year, when we were in the showers, showering, naked, and a man came into the locker room, set his tote bag down, and proceeded to undress and get into the showers with us, fully naked. We had no idea that this was allowed or was a thing. And I talked, this is important, I talked with some of the other swimmers a few days later, and one of the swimmers said, "Yeah, he pulled that stunt three days in a row." And we were like, "What?" And she said, "Yeah, this guy came out onto the deck at 52 minutes, pretended to swim, he had no swim goggles, he hopped in the pool for a couple minutes, pretended to swim, then immediately got out and went into the women's locker room." So he did this three days in a row. Now, does that sound to you like anyone who was honestly there to swim and use the pool? Or do they have some other ulterior motive to get into that locker room? And here's what's weird, and this is documented in an email that I sent to Mr. Ted Stevens. He knew the rhythms of the pool enough to know that at 55 minutes, that is the highest concentration of women in the locker room, because they have to clear the pool. So that timeframe from 55 to 10 after has the most women, and that is when he got in there. So for me, as hard as that was as an adult to experience that, I'm really concerned about our kids. And here's the litmus test. I know there's a family-changing room, and you're saying that we can use that. It's not big enough. Please think about, like, if the girl, if the scouts, like Scout Troop 15, needed to use that locker room.
Thank you, Ms. Brady, your time has expired.
Thank you.
What solution would you have for them? Because I don't know.
We're so sorry. Your time has expired. Feel free to email the City Council. Thank you. And I'd like to make an announcement that there is a separate seating area if you'd like to have a seat. It's right out those doors to the right. There's a whole room set up with a WebEx version of this, so you can see it live, but have a seat, so if you're interested. Alicia Ide will help guide you. She's coming around right now, and she can help guide you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabe Holbert, followed by Rebecca Rona. Not seeing Gabe in the chamber or online. Our next speaker is Rebecca Rona, followed by Brian Sanders.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Rebecca Rona Tuttle. I am a member of the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee. However, tonight I am speaking on my own behalf. Thank you, Mayor O'Brien, for all of your years of service, especially as mayor. I am particularly grateful that during the time of great community dissension over the proposed resolution for a ceasefire between Israel and Gaza, you recommended that the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee create a community conversation. Very helpful. Vice Mayor Pusa and Councilmember Fish, I look forward to you serving in your new capacities. Each of you brings unique gifts, intelligence, knowledge, perspectives, compassion, and a strong desire to create an even more inclusive city where all will thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Sanders, followed by Marcy Bond.
Hi there, Council. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Great. Hi, I'm here tonight to talk about the Alenda Residence for Peaceful Streets. The Alenda Historic District is one of Culver City's oldest preserved neighborhoods. It has trees that are 80 to 90 years old that anchor the entire area. And strangely, though, the city's entertaining a plan to remove these heritage canopy trees to make room for a bike lane. And the bike lane, you know, let's be honest, according to the SCAG data, 2023, at most, there are 20 bike riders a day. And that's up at Washington in Alenda, not even close down near the school area. So, you know, this whole idea's been really nuts, and we've seen this before. In 2017, Helen Chin from Public Works, you know, we have the emails where she was falsifying the data and asked for the presentation to no longer use the language "high injury network" because she wanted to avoid any sort of legal problems for lying about the data, because there's no recorded data of massive injuries on Alenda Street. The other problem that I'd like you to address is that the school district is importing 30% of its population, and that's accounting for the traffic problem two small times during the day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcy Bond, followed by Melissa Sanders.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, and my name is Marcy Bond. I am a Parks and Recs Commissioner, but I'm speaking. My opinions are my own. I do not speak for the commission. First, I'd like to thank Dan O'Brien for his service to the city. The second, I also would like to discuss the tri-school traffic study that happened this past week. Usually, probably 95% to 98% of the time, it's really quiet here in this neighborhood, around Alenda, Franklin, Farragut, this whole neighborhood. It's just very quiet, except for when they drop off and pick up the school students. But this past week, Tuesday and Wednesday, I kept seeing the same amount of cars circa, I mean, the same cars circling our neighborhood. It was insane. They kept passing by over and over again, to the point that I was thinking our neighborhood was being cased. And then Wednesday night, I was outside talking to a neighbor, and I see this car drive by. It was charcoal gray, I think it was a Honda, like, Insight, and I had seen it early in the day a number of times, so I jotted down, like, the three or four first letters to its license plate, because, again, it felt like our neighborhood was being cased. There were so many cars that were the same. It turned right on Alenda.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Seriously, and then it turned left, five seconds left.
As a reminder, there is a new timer. It doesn't make a sound, but it's right up on the screen, so you can watch as your minutes count down. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Sanders, followed by Patrick Godinez.
Good evening. Dan, we're going to miss you in that center seat, number one. Number two, I am concerned about this whole tri-school thing as well. Brian is not my husband, but I do live in the same area, and I was pretty shocked to find out that people are trying to rig the system and faking driving around at all hours. And I didn't know it was happening until someone pointed it out, and I was like, "Well, that explains why I can't turn as easily as before." And then the moment the cameras went down, guess what? They left. So, again, we have some very bad actors in this city, and I find it shameful and disrespectful and pretty shocking that they continue to act in such a horrible, insane behavior. But at the same time, I do not understand why we're spending money on this when we're in a fiscal deficit, both school and city. And more importantly, the school district does have a minimum of 30% of students on permit, plus probably another 10% to 15% that are lying about living here. So when you have a school district that has almost half their student body lying or permitted in, you're going to have a traffic problem, because most of the kids don't live in the area. So that is your first priority. Whatever you're going to study, study that. Get them to figure that out. The fact that the school district has basically been nonexistent.
Thank you, your time has expired.
By the way, you can't see the clock.
We'll get the clock on the screen. I think our next speaker is Patrick Godinez, followed by Andrew Weisman.
Hello. I come to stand before you as a Culver City housing participant, and for the sake of the public, I sit on the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, and I would like to publicly comment. To my knowledge from previous public meetings, our school district seems to be under some financial duress due to enrollment decline that may be caused by student population getting older, as well as the cost of housing being too expensive for families to move to Culver City. I was thinking if the city decided to entertain a sales tax measure increase to relieve the school system's finances, maybe an additional cent percentage can be added to grow this Culver City Housing Trust Fund for Affordable Housing, focusing on families. Let's face it, financial assistance from the county, state, and federal government bodies are going to be scarce. So if we're going to get it done, the city will have to do it once again itself. Also, a past concern was that essential workers, like fire, police, healthcare providers, and teachers, needed to live outside of the city boundary due to the housing costs and made it difficult for them to return to the city for big emergencies. This additional tax revenue to the Housing Trust Fund can provide opportunity for residences, for these workers with families, and again, feed the school district with students. It seemed like a win-win situation for just a fraction of a penny. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Weisman, followed by Richard Burns.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien. Thank you for your service. Vice Mayor Pusa, good luck to you as you move into the center seat. I'm Andy Weisman. I sat on the council since, from 2008 to 2016. I came here this evening to thank our retiring city manager, John Nochbar, for his incredible service to the city. When I was on the council, and our former mayor and former city council member, Sally Wells is in the back, we were on the council when we had a city manager who lasted nine months, replaced by a temporary city manager who lasted three months. And during that period of time, we recruited and were lucky enough to hire John Nochbar. John has led the city nobly through any number of crises. Came in at the height of our great recession in 2008, put us through our memorandum of understandings with our labor unions that reformed our pension and healthcare systems. The state then eliminated redevelopment, which was something that the City of Culver City, amongst the few cities in the state, did properly. Left us hanging with projects that were unfulfilled, and our housing dollars that were taken away by the state, followed again by the pandemic. We are fortunate to have had John in a leadership position, guiding us with a smooth and steady hand for the last 10 years. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Burns, followed by Indy Rishi Singh.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Richard Burns, representative of the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. As of tonight, we wanted to come by and just pay our respects to a council that just keeps setting the bar. Mayor, Dan O'Brien, appreciate all your hard work. We know that on council, you'll just continue the fight. After the ceremony, Vice Mayor Freddie Pusa, looking forward to just seeing all the hard work that you have in the center seat. Again, we just want to say thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do. I see all the little things on social media, and we appreciate it. You guys just do so much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Endi Rishi Singh.
Before I start, I'll just share something from my ancestors and also the ancestors of this land, our ancestors, so some good vibes to balance things out. I could play more, but I only have, what, another minute and 20 seconds? So, actually, I don't live here. I used to live here, uh, years back, for three years I lived in Culver City, and I love this city. I still love coming to the city hall, so I'm really honored to be inside of this space, because I've played a lot of flute music outside there at nighttime under the stars and the moon. Um, it's a great meditation spot, by the way, for you guys. If you ever need a moment, come out here to City Hall at nighttime, right? Right? Enjoy it. So, I'm actually speaking on behalf of a coalition. I'm a part of a sociocratic nonprofit. We just created something called the California Donut Economic Snapshot. This is a whole report, if you guys want to see it, it's open source. Maybe I'll share it with you guys. But this is the California donut, and we're inviting cities and counties all across the state to make their own donuts for their own communities, with the intention to actually come together and come together, maybe there's a better orientation, is us acknowledging that we're in a disaster. You know, we are in an economic disaster, environmental, social, there's a lot of disasters. There's a lot of disasters happening. But can we come together, kind of carpenters, the, the teachers, the nurses, the other people with skills, maybe some of us want to learn skills, for the kids also to have hope and possibility? So, we're using this to have donut disaster festivals, and I welcome that opportunity here to think about how we could come together and be resilient in the face of disasters and actually have hope in the face of disasters, and come together around disasters, rather than be scared of them or on defense, or victims of it, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Okay. Wonderful. May I have a motion to receive and file correspondence?
We have a motion by Councilmember McMoRan, a second by Vice Mayor Puzza. All members have voted. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. And we are on to the consent calendar. Do we have any speakers on any of the items?
We have no speakers, but we do have a correction to item C3.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council. Dana Anderson, Human Resources Director. And I have Stephanie Condra, and who's going to read into the record a correction, as well as some required changes with respect to the salary resolution.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. So, as an update for the formal record, the fleet and facility services manager, the deputy human resources director, and deputy fire chief classifications were omitted in error from all three salary schedules that were attached to your agenda packet and have been corrected and reattached to each resolution. The classification of ambulance operator was also misspelled and has also been corrected. And this shall serve as a formal record that the updates have been made. And then just a report on C3 tonight, so consent item C3 seeks council approval to reclassify the non-benefited, non-exempt pool manager position to a new regular part-time benefitted pool manager position. Also to adopt a resolution approving the salary schedule for the city attorney and city manager effective retroactive to December 1st, 2025. To adopt a resolution approving the salary schedule for the new regular part-time pool manager effective retroactive to November 3rd. And lastly, to adopt a resolution approving the salary schedule for non-benefited employees in accordance with the state. Minimum wage increase effective December 29th, 2025. As part of the city council's request during the May 27th, 2025 council meeting to consider ways for the positions at the plunge to be more competitive in the aquatic sector, including hiring incentives and benefits, PRCS staff is requesting approval to reclassify the non-benefited, non-exempt pool manager position to being a regular part-time position with benefits to make the positions at the plunge more competitive with the job market. The city attorney's salary adjustment will increase to reflect the 4% salary increase in accordance with the executive compensation plan effective retroactive to December 1st, 2025. Due to the federal government shutdown, there has been a delay in reporting of CPI by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and the 4% increase is greater than the CPI adjustment on average on all the prior months in the past year. With city manager John Nakbar's retirement, city council completed a recruitment process to identify his successor. City council selected a candidate and through negotiations, settled upon a starting salary of $370,000 per year. That amount falls between the current step four and step five for the city manager position as reflected in the executive management salary schedule. Staff is recommending that city council approve an amended salary schedule that sets step five as $370,000 and adds step six at $379,720.12. And then lastly, in accordance with the California State law, the city will increase the minimum wage rate to $16.90 per hour for all employer, employees effective January 1st, 2026. And Dana Anderson, HR Director, and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from my colleagues? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Councilmember McMoRan. All members have voted, and the motion passes unanimously.
And we are on to action item A1. Do we, let me ask first, do we have any speakers?
We have four speakers.
Okay, great. Can we have a staff report, please?
Certainly. Dana Anderson, Human Resources Director. Tonight's item, A1, is the appointment of Otis Jones, a city manager, and approval of his executive employment agreement. The city council reached consensus and closed session on December 1st to appoint Mr. Jones, and the agreement before you reflects the compensation parameters previously directed by the council. Key terms include a $370,000 annual salary, CPI-based annual adjustments beginning in December 2026, up to $25,000 in relocation expenses, temporary assistance, rental assistance up to $5,000 per month, and access to the residency incentive program with the loan capped at 1.2 million. The agreement also confirms the at-will nature of the position and provides for severance up to nine months of base salary and benefits, consistent with Government Code Section 53260 if separation occurs without cause. This verbal summary satisfies a requirement under Senate Bill 1436 to orally report key compensation terms before council takes action. Funding for the agreement is included in the FY 2025/26 budget. This concludes my presentation. Available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I'm guessing we don't have any questions. We went through a rigorous interview process and lots of questions and answers. May we hear from our public speakers?
Our first speaker is Michael Kopey, with one minute seated by Noriko Wada, followed by Wayne Siddle, Rebecca Rona, and Melissa Sanders. So, our first speaker is Michael Kopey, with one minute seated.
How much time total?
How much time?
Ninety plus, ninety seconds.
Two and a half minutes.
Pardon me?
Two and a half minutes.
Two and a half minutes. Uh, Mr. Jones, you're coming from Texas. Welcome to civilization. I'm from the deep redneck south myself, North Florida, not Miami, Orlando crap. I'm talking about Trump country. What you've got on this city council here are centrist Democrats and liberal Democrats. They should be walking hand in hand through the parks, smelling the flowers and singing together. Their political differences are very small, and yet it's gonna be like herding kitty cats, even to get them to do the things they want to do. I thought I wasn't gonna come back in because, uh, the planning department was able to push through the ad hoc subcommittee recommendations on community engagement several months ago. When I heard you were getting a new city manager, of course, I came in twice. I'm sure you remember my remarks from both times, okay? Mr. Jones, Nakbar was not a unanimous choice for hiring. You were a unanimous choice. I hope you made a good decision. I trust that you did, and that my coming in here and rabble-rousing, haranguing may not have been a negative, but at least, uh, a mitigating aspect to any reticence you might have to move forward with alacrity. Mr. Jones, we have a thing here in Culver City called community outreach. Developer wants to build a big project, he or she has to engage with the community. The planning department basically hates it, because it's a threat to their authority. In, uh, two years ago, the, uh, developer came through the area that I live, did a lousy job of even notifying people, which would be the whole dang point of it, so people can come in and express their opinions, give their, their two cents worth. We came to the planning director, Mark Munzer, kind of a weasel guy, probably does a good job most of the time, but basically his fallback position is to play wide-eyed innocent. Oh, my gosh, okay? He did nothing. John Nakbar is the representative of the city council. You will be the representative of the city council. You don't work for the bureaucrats. You work for these people. You are their enforcer. Okay? That's what Nakbar should have done, was called Munzer into his office and said, what the hell's going on here? You've got 60 complaints, written complaints and handwritten letters from people in that area, and you ignore them? Who the hell do you think you are? Folks, congratula-, I got a, just a few seconds left. Congratulations on the single stairway apartments. Yeah, I think you all voted for that. Good for you. That's a good progressive kind of thing. I'm glad to see you're all together. I may come back here in January.
Mr. Kopey, your time is expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck to you, Mr. Jones.
Our next speaker is Wayne Siddle, followed by Rebecca Rona. Not seeing Mr. Siddle in the chamber or online. Our next speaker is Rebecca Rona, followed by Melissa Sanders.
Hello again, council members. I don't see Mr. Nakbar. I'm gonna, where is he? Oh, my goodness. Okay, I'm glad you're here. Mr. Nakbar, otherwise known as John, when I first heard that you were retiring, I was dismayed. I was. You have led the city staff so effectively through good times and bad, and I didn't want you to leave us. However, when I learned about the magnificent career of Mr. Jones and his many gifts, I was relieved. Mr. Jones, no doubt you will become an excellent city manager as well. So, congratulations on your retirement, John. I will, will always be grateful to you and welcome, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Sanders.
Good evening, and I did want to wish a happy retirement to John Nakbar. I think he will be sorely missed in this city, and he has done, I think, a really great job, at least for the past, like, you know, six, seven years that I've been really paying attention. I have to say, I am really concerned about this choice, actually, and I hope I am wrong by leaps and bounds and that this new hire surprises me and everyone. I don't know who the candidates were, obviously. I was not part of this vetting process, but I am concerned. So, I will cross my fingers and hope for the best, and if this guy can somehow make this dais work properly and not have three people ignore the fiscal responsibilities of sitting on that dais and not put us into debt, that would be my first choice, is getting them to be rational, proper, respectful council people who put the city first instead of their own agenda. So, I'm gonna wish him luck on that and hope for the best, and hopefully in a few months, I will be thrilled. New year, new hope.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Kelly Kent.
Thank you for giving me time to speak. It's, it's good to see you and be here, and it's, it's been a little bit wa-, it's been a while. I'm Dr. Kelly Kent, uh, former school board president, president twice over, and resident for a while, and, and a happy one. I really enjoy living in Culver City. So, I, I wanted to say welcome to the new city manager, Mr. Jones. Thank you for coming and joining us. It's gonna be a lot of fun. It, it may already be a terr-, a terrifying moment, but it's really, it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're, we're good folks. Most of all, though, I wanted to say goodbye and thank you to John Nakbar. I hired four superintendents and had a lot of interims, and it was an incredible amount of transition, and it was really wonderful to have such stability here. And I have so much appreciation for what it's like to have five bosses. It's making me emotional thinking about it, but I just appreciate you very deeply. Thank you so much for your service. I'm glad to hear you're not leaving. We love you. And, and those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? Councilwoman Fish?
Absolutely. Thank you, mayor. Thank you to, to everyone who came and spoke to celebrate both an end and a beginning. It is wonderful to see so many mayors, past and present here, leaders from across the region. If I tried to name everyone, that would take up all my remarks, so I'll, I'll just say thank you for being here. Um, I want to acknowledge you, John, for your career of public service. You could have chosen a lot of other paths in life, and you chose to devote your career to city government, of all things. God bless you. And to give back and serve this community as city manager for the past 15 years. I'm willing to guess there may have been moments where it felt thankless, but I hope you feel the overwhelming gratitude from our community tonight. Um, I've only had the privilege of working with you for a year, but even in that short time, it's clear how deeply you value collaboration, how naturally you take on complex problems. You lead by empowering your staff, and you model the kind of steady teamwork that allows city government to function at its best. It's evident how much you love the city by the devotion with which you've served it. And through 15 years of economic turbulence, social stressors, a pandemic, bunch of other challenges, you've been a foundation for Culver City, and you have more than earned the respect and admiration of staff, council members, and the community. Under your leadership, the city's grown, it's evolved in profound ways. Financially, we remain on solid ground thanks to a suite of voter-approved measures that you oversaw, C, 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 R, E, B, L, now C, L, that have kept us solvent and allowed us to invest in the services our residents rely on. You've helped strengthen our social safety net, establishing the Housing and Human Services Department overseeing the rent stabilization ordinance, launching the Mobile Crisis Team, helping to bring more affordable homes into our pipeline than ever before, and your work has enabled Culver City to address homelessness and improve how we care for our most vulnerable. And you've also executed on climate and sustainability, the amortization deal of our portion of the Inglewood Oil Field, the transition of the Clean Power Alliance, the creation of Culver City's first complete street, which is a regional model for safe streets design. We are more climate-friendly today and climate-ready because of your steady leadership. And as you helped the city navigate the pressures of this tumultuous national politics, you helped ensure that our values remained intact and our residents protected. Culver City became a sanctuary city during your tenure and has joined other cities in successful legal challenges against efforts to infringe on the rights and dignities of people in our community. You would probably be the first to say you didn't do it alone and give credit to your team, but that is another way you leave this organization stronger than you found it, with the phenomenal staff of civil servants that you have cultivated and supported. Um, and on a personal level, you've been an invaluable resource. Uh, to me, you- You, when I stepped into this role, there was so much I didn't even know that I didn't know, yet you never hesitated to help. You made yourself available whenever I needed context, history, or just someone to bounce ideas off. Every city manager/council relationship that I've ever heard of has moments of friction. We come into these seats hot with big hopes and limited time, and those ambitions inevitably collide with those real-world constraints we face, and it's the city manager who has to mold those ambitions into something achievable and then figure out how to get it done. It's an incredibly complex job, and yet you make it look easy. So thank you, John, for 15 years of service to the community and a lifetime of giving back. I know Culver City is still your home, and I expect you won't be a stranger, and I hope that as both your council member and a friend, my door is always open. So tonight is, again, an ending, it's also a beginning, and I couldn't be prouder of the person we've unanimously chosen to lead us forward. Mr. Otis Jones, welcome to Culver City. Your skill, experience, and depth of knowledge are undeniable. What stood out even more was your passion for inclusion, your deep sense of justice, and the optimism you bring to every challenge. Those qualities convince me that you're the right person to lead us into this next chapter. So thank you for stepping up. We're lucky to benefit from your expertise, your talent, and your contagious laugh. We have real challenges ahead, a growing population, fiscal pressures, affordability crisis, a hostile federal government continues to place our most vulnerable at risk, but I know you're ready for the moment, and I have no doubt that, like your predecessor, you will accomplish great things here. And joining with my colleagues, I can't wait to see what we all build together. Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you. I'll be brief, because my colleague has literally said it all. That was a really great council member. John Nakbar, thank you for your leadership over these years. Wishing you a fantastic retirement and many happy years as you enjoy Culver City as a private citizen. And a heartfelt welcome to Otis Jones. I'm grateful that you have decided to bring your many years of experience to us here in Culver City and looking forward to your leadership and future collaboration. Thanks so much for the time and wishing everyone the best.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vera?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to the new vice mayor for really breaking it down and putting everything that really John is all about, so I appreciate that. I don't know if thank you is enough, but thank you, John. Thank you for your years of service, but also thank your family. I think your family was supportive and of your career and you, so I want to thank you and your family for 15 years of service to the city, plus your extended career. You led the city through some of the most challenging times. You and then Mayor Erickson really navigated and created some sort of innovative, creative sort of solutions to navigate through the most challenging and the most economically difficult times that I think any city has ever seen. During it all, you were a strong, quiet leader. You stood behind your staff and supported your staff. I know, I appreciate that, and as well as your staff. You have a way of hiring the right person for the right job and giving them the tools and trusting that they will do a good job and standing back and watching them do great things, so I appreciate it, John. I appreciate all that you've given to the city. Like I said, thank you isn't enough, but thank you. Thank you for everything. Your leadership will be missed. I'll miss looking at your faith from up here. I'm going to put a cut-up, you know, poster next to Otis there for a while, you know, just to transition, but thank you for everything. Mr. Jones, thank you so much for choosing our city. Looking forward to working with you moving forward and collaborating on items. So welcome to you and your family coming, and that's it. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Puzza?
Thanks. I'm going to save my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. I've had the great fortune to have done kind of a tour with John over the past month. There's been a few different groups in Culver City that have wanted to congratulate him on his retirement and look back on his past here in Culver City, so I've had an opportunity to speak, you know, my thoughts on him, and, you know, he's not only been here for 15 years, but he's been in the city manager business or on his way up to city manager for 46 years. So, you know, he's got a wealth of knowledge. He's had several stops in different cities from the Midwest, West, and we've really benefited from all of that experience. It's been great. Anyone who knows John or has even, doesn't know him but has seen him in action here, he is calm, steady, sober-minded, and I think it's really important that we had someone like him in that seat for all these years, because we faced a lot of crises, and Councilwoman Fish went through all of them, as did former Mayor Andy Weissman. So that leadership was great, and I very much enjoyed his advice, his wisdom, and his friendship. He's a really great guy. In perfect John fashion, he is, he did not want to be sitting in his old seat at the beginning of this meeting, because this is now Otis Jones' seat, and John's humble, and he does not want this to be about him. He's cringing all through all these words that we're saying, but we do have to say thank you, and we do appreciate him, because he empowers his people, his, all the way from director down to, you know, the newest hires, he lets them grow and take on responsibility, and it creates, you know, future great leaders. I think our staff shows that. Every time we see them give presentations, their knowledge and expertise, and their willingness to work with us comes from the top, it's really appreciated. And John's, John and his wife Patty are staying in Culver City, and knowing how many stops they've made through his career, that's saying something. We have a fantastic city, and a lot of it has to do with John. So thank you, John, for all these years of service, and I'm really, I feel very fortunate to have known you through most of your years here in Culver City. And to Otis Jones, welcome. We've already had several conversations. He's clearly very well-qualified. We had many candidates to choose from, and he rose to the top, and infectious laugh is accurate. He's a very, not just a very skilled and experienced leader, but he's someone that I think everyone will enjoy meeting and getting to know, so I can't wait to, you know, bring Otis on the citywide tour and have you all know him. So I've already submitted my motion to approve. If we can get a second?
We have a motion and a second. A motion by Mayor O'Brien, second by Councilmember Fish.
Actually said two seconds.
All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn? No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Kidding. Okay, on to A2. I don't think we have a staff report, do we? So I am going to start this off because I am proud and happy to enter a motion for
I have a motion by Mayor O'Brien, a second by Councilmember Vera. All members have voted. Congratulations.
Okay, before I give up my chair, I'm going to read through, so we only do this once a year, so I gotta, you know, I gotta read what I have to say here from our city clerk.
I think you already did it.
I did it all. I took care of that? Okay, now I'm just gonna get...
Unless you want to say.
All right. Great. 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 Okay, I'm going to speak for a minute, maybe a couple minutes. I don't have anything scripted, as usual, so it probably won't be perfectly articulated, but Culver City is an amazing city, and I've lived here now for 26-plus years, 25-plus years, and, you know, I've done it. I'm here today because I love it, I love the city, and it's just been the most incredible honor to sit in this chair. It can be really challenging. We're not always, you know, the most popular people, and sitting in the seat, you know, this person has to, you know, run the meeting. That's pretty much our, the mayor's, you know, biggest power play. We all have five votes, individual votes. I knew that coming into this role that it was largely a ceremonial position, but what I didn't quite realize was how important people off this dais, how highly they regard the position of mayor. When you go to places and you introduce yourself as a city council member, it's not, you know, "Oh, nice to meet you," but when you're ma, yeah, but when you're mayor, it's like, "Wow, you're the mayor." So, you know, it holds, that means it's, you know, it carries a lot of responsibility. It really does. You need to be the voice of the city, and I don't, you know, you need to have an opinion, clearly, that you're on, but it's just really important that, you know, you represent the city with honor, I believe with humility, and you be there. I took that to heart. Every opportunity that I could humanly make possible to attend and speak at, I would, because our community members, our stakeholders in the city, they really value that, and I took that to heart, and I thought it was very important. You know, I spoke my voice up here for the things that I believed in, and I think that that's really important as well. We clearly do not agree on everything, but I do think if we count the votes and we count the decisions, we agree on far more things than we don't. I think that this position's important, to treat others with respect and with empathy and to listen to them and to consider their opinions, and I try to do that every time, but I also, you know, share what I believe, even if it doesn't jive with the person I'm speaking with. And I've found that more times than not, people respect that even though we don't agree on where we believe any one issue should be. So that's been the way I've taken this position. It's been, this has been the hardest year of mine, and Beverly tied together, and not because of being mayor. The mayor part's been really good, so I just want to, Beverly's out there. Yeah, there she is. I really want to thank her, because being mayor has not made the other stuff easier. It's made it harder, and she's put up with, you know, a lot of me not being present, and I apologize and I appreciate you, Beverly, for that. So with that, I would like to let my council members, I think that's what's next, right? City clerk?
Can we do a motion for vice mayor as well?
I think that's after.
We, I go there.
What's going to happen?
Nominations.
Yes.
Yeah.
The mayor and the vice mayor were both primed.
Yeah.
So Freddie, it would be up vice mayor for you to take over, take the helm, and we have now changed your screen.
I'm sorry. The one thing I did not do, I have to, I have to, because I do this, I get caught up in the moment and I forget things. I'm really happy for Freddie, for you, Freddie. Freddie and I, we work together on several subcommittees, and I feel like we work well together. I, we, sometimes, I don't know, I don't feel like we disagree, at least in our subcommittees on a lot, but Freddie offers a lot of things that I don't, and I really appreciate that. I think he's a plus-one when he's, and I mean that in the best way. He adds to the conversation and adds and makes things better when we work together, and I think he will do great in this role. He will fulfill all the things that I believe were important to me, and that's, you know, holding the office with honor and with respect and respecting others and doing his best to be present wherever he is needed, and I wish you the best of luck, because if Freddie succeeds, then we all succeed, so. And by the way, it took me three months to realize, there's actually a gavel in this drawer, which I never used, but it's there, Freddie.
Former Mayor O'Brien, you may stay where you are seated. It already has you listed as a council member, and it already has Mayor Puzza listed in front of his seat at the dais. And next, mayor will take over, and I will remind Mayor Puzza that not only will you be presiding over the election of the vice mayor, but you will also, before we hear from anyone else, also recommend that the mayor and vice mayor serve as the chair and vice chair of all of our bodies as well, so that doesn't fall through the cracks, which sometimes it does.
And we'll do that before the pinning?
We'll do that for, after we do the vice mayor.
Great.
And before we do pinning for anyone. Yep.
Great. May I get a nomination for vice mayor, please?
Do we have a name in mind?
Verbal?
Oh, yes. Oh, go ahead.
I'm happy to nominate Councilmember Fish, Bubba Fish.
And we have a motion by Councilmember McMoran and a second from Councilmember O'Brien. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously. And your digital placard now reads, Vice Mayor Fish.
And I also make a motion that the mayor and vice mayor will also serve as chair and vice mayor of the authority, housing authority, parking authority, and successor
We have a motion by, I think, Councilmember McMoran and a second from Councilmember Please vote. All members have voted, and that passes unanimously. At this time, mayor, would you like to do your pinning?
I would.
Okay. Please step into the well. Please step into the well. And, and who will be doing your pinning? Hi, what's your name?
Matthew Greenstein.
And then McKinley, I know you wanted to say something, so once you all get a picture, we'll have you say what you want to say, okay? And McKinley, state your name and how you know the new mayor, and then please say what you'd like to say, okay?
Um, my name is McKinley, and I know the mayor because my mom met her, met, met him in high school, right? Oh, oh, yeah. And I just wanted to say that he is the best uncle I have found.
Thank you McKinley, and thank you everyone. Are you done with your pictures now? Great. So, we'll ask you to stand to the side, please, and we're going to ask the newly-minted vice mayor Fish to come on down for his pinning. And who's here to pin you? Who would like to pin you? Absolutely. Didn't have to ask twice. Thank you, family members and friends, so much. I just want to have one photo op with the new mayor and the new vice mayor together. Thank you, everyone. And as we're having this short photo op, I will let you know, next, we are going to have some presentations from elected officials who have arrived today. So, if the new, let's see, how are we gonna do this? We have the LA County Assessor, Jeffrey Prang, here. And we're gonna have him come up, and there are gonna be some presentations.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, honorable members of the council, it is a pleasure for me to be here today. You're probably all thinking, "Who better to capture the spirit of this special occasion than the county property tax assessor?" I was trying to add a little life into your, your meeting. I was, I was admonished by the clerk to not ramble on because she would ring the bell. But I'm thrilled to be here in, in Culver City. I'm a neighbor of Culver City, just next door in Baldwin Hills, and really pleased to know the leadership of the city and the quality of this, the community that, that you provide. I wanted to do two things. I wanted to first congratulate Dan O'Brien for your tenure as mayor. As I told you before the meeting, I thought, I, I was a council member of West Hollywood for many years, I served four terms as mayor. I always liked being mayor, but I always thought that even better, better than being mayor was being the former mayor. Because, because they always acknowledge you as being mayor, you get a lot of credit, but you don't have to do quite as much work. And for the next year, you can look at Freddie and say, "When I was mayor, we did this way." And, but, but Dan, I know how hard you worked, the creativity, the innovation, and the, the compassion that you brought to this job was really remarkable, and I wanted to acknowledge you for your service. And I brought for you a proclamation from the County of Los Angeles Office of the Assessor. To, I'm not gonna read it, suffice it to say, it says lots of nice things about you and the good work that you've done over the course of the, of the past year. That's it. I also wanted to congratulate my friend Freddie Puzza on your elevation to, as mayor. I brought you a certificate as well, Freddie. It's not as big because you haven't done anything yet. Next, next year, we will record all of your accomplishments in the, in that scroll, but I am really, really proud of you Freddie. You've done a wonderful job as an elected official here in Culver City. And I'll tell you and to the rest of your colleagues how, how impressed I am by the leadership of this city council, the professionalism of your staff. Culver City is truly one of the best managed, best-led cities in, in California. And I know that because I spend a great deal of time here recreating and shopping and, and spending time with all of you, my friends, in, in local government. It's a, it's a big job Freddie. I think you are well-prepared to, to be an exceptional mayor of the city. You bring a great deal of, of passion to this job. You're a great listener, which I think is, for any elected official, is half the, half the job, letting people know that, that somebody at city hall is listening to them, their concerns and their priorities. I look forward to working with you and to, with the vice mayor, Mayor Fish. I didn't bring you a certificate, Bubba, because vice mayor's a little more like, like lady in waiting, you know, you- It's, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get you one when we get to the, to the, to the big, to the big job next year. And although it's not part of this presentation right now, I did want to acknowledge and congratulate your new city manager. And believe it or not, I even brought a little certificate for you, just to, when you get your house, make a copy of this and put it with your tax bill, see if it helps you.
We'd love to have a photo op with-
Thank you very much.
Each and every one of you presenting the commendations. Thank you. They'll come to the well.
If I could have you stand a little bit more toward the middle, that would be great.
Perfect.
Alright, take a couple, ready, three, two, one. And then this way, three, two.
Thank you so much. Next, we have, oh, and council, you might all want to step into the well for this one. We have Carlos Panilla, who's the senior field representative for Senator Lola Smallwood Cuevas, District 28, and he's going to be presenting, not one, not two, not three, but five presentations. And if you'd like, you can do it from there and then we can give them to him all as he's talking?
Oh, well, I'll do it from here.
Okay.
And then I'll step on well. Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the senator. My name's Carlos Panilla, the senior field rep for the 28th district. And the senator would like to send her best. I'm not gonna read these certificates entirely, but I'm just gonna say, "Mayor, thank you for a successful year." And the senator would like to thank you for your hard work and the positive vision you've brought to the city, wishing you continued success in all your future endeavors and continued service to our community. And Mr. Puzza, the senator would like to wish you well in this coming year, and please feel free to call us whatever you need. And the senator would like to thank you and wishing you continued success as you build on this year's achievements and lead Culver City towards an even brighter future. I didn't forget you. Councilman Fish, well, Vice Mayor Fish, again, the senator would like to say that our office is, is at your disposal. And wishing you great success as you take on this new and well-deserved role as new vice mayor. And for council members Vera and McMoran, you helped shape the city's achievement with the transit agency becoming the Transit Agency of the Year. And the senator would like to thank you for this well-deserved recognition, reflects the hard work of everyone committed to making Culver City a model city for excellence across the state. Congratulations.
Alright, we'll take a couple. Ready, three, two.
Mayor, please don't sit down yet. Thank you so much. And next, we have the Culver City School Board President, Vice President, and member, oh, let's see, President Esador, Vice President Loretto, and Member Lockman to make some presentations.
Give me the Obama shake, I don't know if you remember the SNL skit, but I see your brother. Anyways, this is, this is super exciting, everyone. My last certificate is chair, we're gonna welcome our new chair, Vice President Loretto, tomorrow, but I think we wanted to, to be here to celebrate you, outgoing Mayor O'Brien, and, and to show how excited we are for your leadership, Mayor Puzza. Are we excited for Mayor Puzza? You know, I subscribe by the idea that if you show me your friends, they'll tell you who you are. And when I look out at all these people who came to show up for you, Mayor Puzza, I think that I'm, I honestly believe that I'm looking at your reflection and, and your dedication and commitment to the city and to this work. And I think we just wanted to be here to present a certificate to you to honor, I think, your work and all that we know you're gonna do. We have one for you too, outgoing Mayor O'Brien. Sorry, we didn't bring certs for the entire council, but we did better than the assessor because, not to talk about size, but our certs are the same, so. I think that the vice chair and, and Member Lockman want to say something, but I think we just wanted to be here to, to really show our support for you all and your dedication to the district.
Thank you. I didn't know I was gonna be so emotional tonight, seeing all of you here, and to wish the, the mayor, like, best wishes and thank you so much, and also to wish the new mayor, you are a beacon of light that we are all here to wish well and see this, we wish we weren't the first, but we won't be the last, kind of uplift as we climb. That is what the city needs, and we are all here for it and energized by this historical moment, and we know you're gonna meet it. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, with respect to Mr. Nakbar, who's not here, in my personal capacity, I'm also a commissioner, commissioner, oh, he is here. He's hiding back there, okay. So used to seeing you up here. But I wanted to thank him and thank all of you, you know, Mayor O'Brien and the rest of council for being a great partner with the Finance Advisory Committee and as well with, with us and the education community. You've been there when we needed you most, we appreciate it, we look forward, we appreciate your leadership, Mayor O'Brien. We know your long history with us and the schools. And Freddie, we know you'll be there for us as well, sorry, Mayor Puzza, you'll be there with us as well, and we're excited to work with you to make sure that we're uplifting every child that has the opportunity to, to excel. So, thank you.
Alright, we'll do one, three, two. And then this way, three, two. And then this way. Three, two. One, two, three.
Next, we have West Hollywood. We have three representatives from West Hollywood.
A large delegation from West Hollywood. Very excited to celebrate such a special night for the city of Culver City. Congratulations to you, new city manager, but the real act is before us. Congratulations to the new mayor, Freddie Puza. We're so excited for what you will bring to the city, both in terms of representation on a national scale, in terms of your story as the first LGBTQ elected here in the city, serving as mayor. Coming from, coming from a neighboring city, West Hollywood, that started as an LGBTQ majority 40 years ago, we don't fail to recognize how historic this moment truly is. And as I serve in national landscapes with LGBTQ electeds, this moment has been long awaited for, and your leadership was so, so exciting to so many people all across the country. And you're right there with them, Bubba, serving as Vice Mayor. It's truly exciting moment. I also just wanted to pay tribute, though, to the Honorable Dan O'Brien, who had the pleasure of serving alongside his mayor this last year. This city has had a really remarkable opportunity to have its story told through your national leadership, watching you at the National League of Cities, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and all these places tell the story of Culver City as you have done with empathy and care and compassion, and a real resolve for what the city's future looks like has been remarkable. And I just want to make sure that this city knows that all the time you've invested outside of your role in the city, beyond your role as a husband and the work you play, there's so many different ways, that you took the time to go out into all these places and make sure Culver City was known for the city it is, is another act of your remarkable service. And so we have a couple certificates, not to be outdone, to recognize your leadership and the historical leadership that Freddie Puza as mayor and Vice Mayor Bubba Fish will truly bring to the city. So I'll allow my colleagues to speak as well. Danny, John.
Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Dan Hang from West Hollywood. I wanted to say congratulations to Mayor O'Brien. Thank you for your service to the city of Culver City. We are regional partners. We are regional siblings, so thank you for all that you've done. I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Bubba Fish. I ran with you. We ran the same cycle, so it's very exciting to see you elevated to the role of Vice Mayor. And I want to congratulate Mayor Freddie Puza. I know you've done a lot for the city. You've worked very hard to support workers by bringing project labor agreements into Culver City, and that is why many unions support you, including the carpenters, which are here tonight. And congratulations to our new, to the new city manager. We have a new city manager as well in West Hollywood, so I encourage you to reach out. We are your regional brothers and sisters in this area, so we would look forward to working together with you all. Congratulations.
They always, you know, they make me go last because they know I'll say something that then we shouldn't have anyone follow. But, you know, Dan, you know, Councilmember O'Brien, your leadership is known throughout the western side of our city, and I just got to thank you for the stewardship that you provided. Being a former mayor is the best position because you get to say, well, we were good when I was mayor, but I know that the incoming mayor is going to keep things going really strong. And so congratulations on your tenure. It takes a lot on a family and a soul, and that's not lost on your incredible remarks tonight. So, Bubba, I love you so much. I am so proud of you. And to see a council, I mean, I just got to say Culver City, well, if one of you comes out, you'll rival us for having three out of, four out of the five, but we'll get there later. But I digress. I mean, no time like the present. But I just have to say, when you see it, you can achieve it, and you really do exemplify what that new vision of leadership looks like on transportation, on housing. We got to make sure your meetings go till 11:00, just saying. People say that, but, you know, I watch your recaps, and it is strong in Culver City, so I am so excited for your leadership, and I can't wait to cheer you along the whole way. Freddie, I'm going to cry because you are just like, you are just, when you think about morals and leadership, it is you. I mean, I have never, you know, I have had the great pleasure of knowing you before you ran and when you ran, and to stand up there as the first openly gay mayor of this city is just revolutionary. And to see your beautiful family right here next to you, it just tells me who you are as a person. And that is exactly what President Isador said and what so many of us here agree today, is that when community comes together and they see the best of us, and the best of us is you right now. And so truly, truly, congratulations. And, you know, I just, you know, I'll leave it with this. Leave trans people alone, and at the end of the day, serve with leadership, the integrity, and I just can't wait to see you make this beautiful city as beautiful as the rainbow that it really is. So congratulations.
Is there a representative from Santa Monica here this evening? Okay, they had dropped off some certificates. One for the outgoing mayor and one for the incoming mayor. So this is for you. And this is for you. And then I'd be remiss if I did not show this to everyone. This is a resolution by the Honorable Isaac G. Bryan, 55th Assembly District, related to the Honorable Freddie Puza. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But look how gorgeous. Beautiful, right? And it's ready for hanging. We do have two speakers from the public who wanted to speak, and then if you would like, we can have the council members make remarks, and then that will be it for this meeting. So we have two speakers. Oh, four speakers.
So our speakers are Megan Otzen-Goodwin, Ray Long, Endy Rishi Singh, and Ryan Hanley. Our first speaker is Megan Otzen-Goodwin, followed by Ray Long.
First, I want to address Mayor O'Brien. Congratulations on your term as mayor, and I want to thank you for being a great partner in gun violence prevention and policy, and also for being a vocal supporter of immigrant rights. I really appreciate your advocacy and leadership in these areas and feel good knowing you will continue to fight for these causes on council. And Mayor Puza, I want to congratulate you on being sworn in tonight as mayor. Having supported and campaigned for you during your election, I believed in the power of this moment for a long time, and I'm so glad to be witnessing it today. I'm so proud to know you, and I'm very excited for this next chapter for both you and Culver City. I know your collaborative spirit will mean bringing people together for the greater good and ushering in progress. Thank you both for your service to the city. And I also want to thank John Nakbar for his service as city manager, and especially for his work in overseeing the adoption of Chapter 1119 in 2022 and the purchase of the land parcel at 11029 Washington Boulevard in 2023. I appreciate all you did to make those things happen, and I welcome Mr. Jones to Culver City. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ray Long, followed by Endy Rishi Singh.
Hi. So thank you, Ray Long, President of the Culver City Federation of Teachers. And I first wanted to come here to say a big thank you to former Mayor O'Brien. Thank you for your support of the teachers' union here in Culver City. Thank you for your support of Santa, oh, sorry, of Culver City Unified School District, and just really kind of being a partner with us over this last year as the district faced this financial crisis. I also really want to congratulate Mayor Freddie Puza. I really look forward to you. Freddie and I have already began conversations and just have had a lot of great things to talk about. I really also appreciate your support, that you've always been there for the schools, and you, you know, just kind of want to put schools first, and I really appreciate that. And to everyone on the council, because I think all five of you are there for our schools, and I just wanted to give my support and just congratulations to you all and look forward to continuing to work with you, looking forward to getting a good joint use agreement between the city and the school district, one that's going to really help both agencies out. Thank you to Mr. Nakbar for his service as city manager and welcome to our newest city manager, and we really look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Endy Rishi Singh, followed by Ryan Hanley.
I guess I should give an encore maybe for the flute, huh? But like, something more like an ode to the mayor, you know, and the vice mayor and everyone else. But I do, I just wanted to share, you guys are really lucky. This guy is awesome, you know? Like, one of my favorite experiences with him that shows his character and what kind of person he is, and I hope he continues doing it, is, is walking, is how important, and how he walks around the neighborhood and how he actually walks, which is also a sign of intelligence and also connecting to the community. And so I just want to honor you, Freddie, for being the kind of civic leader we need, you know? And I'm sure you guys are all too. Let's go, we can go for a walk too. If you want to plant a tree with me, I'm down with that. But I also just welcome and invite you to just continue leaning in to the way that you're honoring not just the founding fathers, but also the principles that could make this country and this community such a beacon for possibility. I can't help but notice we're in Culver City and the heart of Screenland, and this where imagination kind of took off in the world. Have you guys, can you guys imagine? Like Hollywood never would have happened if Culver City wasn't here. So I wonder what other stories this place can, this community can make, and you too. You're a part of now the story, so I'm excited, and I'm excited to play with you guys however I can, if I can serve in any way, and also just welcome the kind of service you guys are all going to do. And if you ever need any support, mental health, physical health, spiritual health, some walking, I'm always down for that, right? Maybe some walk, walking and talking civic, civic town halls will be kind of fun as well. So thank you so much, Freddie, and all you guys. Nice to, nice to meet you too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan Hanley, followed by Kelly Kent.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I'd just like to take a quick moment to congratulate my dear friend and Culver City's new mayor, Freddie Puza. Congrats. And in addition to saying congratulations, I just want to emphasize again that I believe it's really important to recognize that Mayor Puza will be, or is now, Culver City's first openly LGBTQ plus mayor in history. Now, I think perhaps more than at any other time in our nation's history, it is vital to recognize and celebrate moments such as these. For LGBTQ plus people, these are not safe times. And according to a recent survey by The Trevor Project, 90% of LGBTQ plus youth have said that their well-being was negatively impacted due to recent politics. And I think there's a lot of adults here in the room who feel the same way. So really, these are not safe times. For many people right now, these are not safe times. And so moments like these matter. It matters to be electing or to be, you know, recognizing as mayor this openly LGBTQ person, and that that be such a person as Freddie, who is so compassionate and so caring and really reaches across the aisle. So it matters more than ever for members of our community to see ourselves reflected and represented by our elected officials. And as a gay man and as a friend, I am so proud of Mayor Puza and so proud of Culver City for electing him to this council and paving the way for this historic moment. So tonight, I celebrate it.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Kelly Kent.
Hi. Good evening again. I'm Dr. Kelly Kent, and I want to say thank you to former Mayor O'Brien. It was lovely to be a resident with you at the helm. I really appreciate, and appreciated in particular your mayoral service, but I appreciate in general your council service. Thank you so much. And I am here to share some words with our mayor, Freddie Puza. Freddie, I'm here to express pride and gratitude, an immense amount of both, truly. But more, I'm here to say many times over that you are not alone. You are never alone up there or in your mind or your heart or your home, even when it may feel profoundly lonely, and I know from a decently deep well of experience. You have already done so much, and I know there are great things ahead on safety, mobility, housing, potholes, getting kids to school safely. I know there is so much more to come with you at the helm. That rocks. I'm so excited for that. But don't ever forget, I and we, we will be here for all of it through thick and thin, okay? We got your back.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Great. Do I have any final comments from colleagues? I'll start with Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember O'Brien, former mayor, thank you for your, your leadership, your service. I know you did a, a lot to get us where we are with the Olympics. I'm looking forward to those relationships coming to fruition. I appreciate you and the mayor's hard work on, on really moving that forward. Want to thank Beverly for putting up with this guy's stuff for the last year. And I know it's how important it is to have that support, so thank, thank you, Beverly. To the mayor, mayor, I'm so happy and excited to be working beside you and with you. Looking forward to the years to come. It's really an exciting time for you, for the city, and for me. So thank you and looking forward to it. To the Vice Mayor, thank you so much, sir. Looking forward to your leadership as well and how we can move forward. But I know we all want to get on to the party tonight, so I'll keep my, my comments there. Thank, thank you all three for everything you've done for the city, and thanks again to John. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember O'Brien.
Well, I'm going to keep it short and say, you know, ditto to what I, what Councilmember Vera said. And again, I think Freddie will do a great job, mayor. And I look forward to the coming years. There's going to be a lot on our plates, and I know you'll do a great job in this seat. And also, Vice Mayor, when you show up to the events that the mayor can attend, I know you'll represent us really well. And I know that, you know, you have great passion in your beliefs, and I know you will show well for our city. So congrats.
Thank you. Councilmember McMoran.
Thank you. I will continue to be brief tonight. Thank you so much to former Mayor Dan O'Brien for your leadership over this past year. Looking forward to continuing to work with you on the council. Mayor Puza, Vice Mayor Fish, I'm so proud of y'all. It truly is a historic night. It is, you know, I always say it's kind of wild that we're, that we still have firsts in the 2025 of things, but that makes them so much more impactful and meaningful. And I hope that, although other speakers have touched on it, I hope that we don't miss the significance of what's happening in our community with the backdrop of what we've all experienced this year, what our children have seen, what we have borne witness to. It means so much in this moment. I'm looking forward to the indelible mark you both will make on our community. I could have things written that I could say, but at the end of the day, now forevermore, in my mind, y'all are going to be known as my alphabet. And I'm looking forward to us doing some good for this amazing city that we love. So thank you for stepping up. I'm looking forward to y'all slaying these roles, and I'm here if you need me. Congratulations.
Vice Mayor Fish.
Thank you, Mayor Puza. I- Thank you, Mayor Puzza. I, I'm going to try to say less than I wrote. So, Dan, Councilmember O'Brien, I just want to share that you served as mayor with distinction. You were visible. You're accessible. You were compassionate. Those are the things that we look for and that we want in our mayor. And you were all those things when it mattered the most, like when in January, the wildfires, communities went up in flames, fear gripped all of us. You kept Culver City informed, reassured. When ICE terrorized the west side, you stood with our immigrant communities. You helped advance meaningful state legislation, supporting legal resources for impacted families. And you talked about some of the personal challenges that you've experienced from the entertainment industry slowdown to a busted knee or two. But you rebounded by pouring your heart into serving this city. So I just want to share that, you know, we might disagree on plenty up here as a body, but your dedication to the city has never been in doubt, and you set a high bar. And I'm grateful that there's someone ready to meet it. Mayor Puzza, congrats. I am really thrilled that we're, we're going to have your representation this next year. You're thoughtful in your decision-making. You work to see multiple perspectives. You make yourself available, especially to folks who don't always agree with you. And you've already helped shape our city by bringing people together and pushing us forward. And it's, it's a privilege to serve alongside all of, all of my colleagues, Councilmember Vera, and two who have broken barriers, our first black woman to serve as mayor, Yasmeen Imani-McMorn, and now our first openly LGBTQ mayor, Freddie Puzza. Freddie, I know, yeah, feel free. Freddie, I know your leadership will inspire young people, especially queer young people, to step into their own roles in leadership in the community. And I'm really grateful to serve alongside you. And I just want to thank my husband, Aaron, and my in-laws, Amy and Rick, for being here tonight. Congrats again, Mayor Puzza. Thank you again, Councilmember, former Mayor O'Brien, and here's to a great year ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Fish, and good evening, friends. Thank you so much for being here in this room, in this moment. It means so much to me, to my sister, my nephew, Matthew, to my godchildren, McKinley, Gracie, and Ryan, and my chosen family, Beth and Christine, every ally who stood with me. You're not just my support system, you're the reason I believe in the work. You're the proof that it matters. Former Mayor O'Brien, thank you for your service. This coming year, I know we'll continue to partner on the Olympics planning. I'm looking forward to how it can continue to develop and how many more nations you'll help bring to Culver City. And we'll get to practice hosting major international events with the World Cup. Vice Mayor Fish, congratulations. What a historic moment for the both of us. I look forward to the coming year and focusing on how we build a Culver City where everyone can participate. I hope you will take on the mantle of our civic duty czar as you spearhead the Civic Assembly Project next year to get more of our community involved and educated in our processes. We look forward to watching it unfold, so let's make it extraordinary. To our outgoing city manager, John Nakbar, 15 years of service to Culver City is amazing. While most kids dreamed of becoming an astronaut, a doctor, or an actor, you once told me you dreamed of becoming a city manager, and you did it with honor, integrity, and unwavering dedication. So thank you for every Monday night. Thank you for every tough call, every moment you chose this city. I hope you enjoy your retirement and you enjoy Monday nights. But let me tell you what tonight is really about, a new day in Culver City. Last week we announced, or tonight, and we appointed the unanimous hiring of Culver City's first black city manager, Otis Jones. And I have the profound honor of serving as your first openly LGBTQ plus mayor. Now, I know what some of you are thinking. That's nice. That's progress, and it is, but it's more than that. It's not just good news. It's a promise being kept. It's the sound of another door that was once locked being thrown open. It's Megan Sally Wells, and Thomas Small, and Daniel Lee, and Yasmeen Imani-McMorn saying, we've started something, and tonight we get to say we're continuing it. Unlike the rhetoric from some Washington leaders, diversity isn't our slogan, it's our strength. And when leadership looks like the people it serves, something changes, not just in city hall, in classrooms, in living rooms, in the mind of every kid who thinks they can't, who now knows they can. In that same spirit of equitable leadership, I want to acknowledge the foundational work of my colleague, Yasmeen Imani-McMorn, Councilmember McMorn. I'm especially committed to advancing the initiative she's championed, establishing a committee on women and girls. When women and girls have the res- when women and girls have the resources, influence, and support to lead, our entire community becomes stronger, more innovative, and more prepared for the future. This is a new day in Culver City, and I'm honored to work with the new city manager to create new opportunities and new ways of operating in the city. The past, the present, and the future, they're all right here, right now. Every decision made before us created the city we love today, and we honor that. But we also remember what we were. We were a sundown town. That's our history. We don't get to forget it. We don't get to pretend it didn't happen. We're not responsible for the sins of our past, but we are absolutely responsible for the future we build. And the decisions we make this year, this year will echo for decades. That's not hyperbole. That's the job. And I promise you, I'll treat it with the seriousness it deserves. To everyone who has ever lived, worked here, invested in the city, you are a part of Culver City's story. You matter. And to the tens of thousands of people who will move here in the next 10, 20 years, we see you coming. We're getting ready for you right now. But here's the truth we have to acknowledge. This new day begins under a shadow. You feel it. I feel it. The fear about what's happening at the federal level, the uncertainty, the dread that sits in your stomach when you read the news. If your immigrant family worried about what comes next, if you're LGBTQ plus afraid your rights are suddenly negotiable, if you're a tenant wondering if you'll be able to stay in your home, and I need you to hear me, your, your city government sees you, we hear you, and we will protect you. Culver City will not be complicit in the erosion of human dignity, will not stand by while civil liberties are dismantled. This city is a sanctuary, not because we say it is, because, but because we act like it is. We will use every tool, every ordinance, every ounce of authority we have to make sure federal uncertainty does not become local insecurity. And that's not politics, that's principle. Now, let's talk about what we're going to do over the next few months. First, affordability and sustainability. We need a stable funding mechanism for Affordable Housing Trust Fund, not next year, this year. I love that energy. And our climate action plan, we go big, we go bold, we go now. We're finishing our transportation network, making the city safer and easier to navigate. And as mentioned, we're pursuing project labor agreements with our union, because when the city grows, local workers with good paying union jobs should benefit. Second, fiscal responsibility. We need a budget that reflects our priorities, not just our projections. Yes, our structural deficit is projected to level off, but projected is not guaranteed. So I'm proposing a financial supplement for the community, as well as a strategic planning retreat for the council. We're making our capital improvement projects public and clear because you need to deserve, you deserve to know what's coming and have a say in what we build. And third, we build our profile. We're home to Apple, Amazon, Sony, TikTok, Pinterest. We have incredible small businesses, world-class restaurants, and an amazing public school system. But too many people still think of us as the cut-through city, but we're the destination, and it's time everyone else knew about it. Along with the Director of Economic Development and Councilmember Vera, we are committed to moving forward with the tourism website and branding project because our story deserves to be told. But let's, our success not be measured by profit or corporations headquartered here, but by permanence, by belonging, by whether our neighbors stay here. To every city employee, you make this work. You deliver services that residents expect and deserve. The rising profile of Culver City, that's you. That's your expertise, your dedication, your refusal to settle for good enough. So thank you. To everyone in the city, renters, landlords, educators, social workers, business owners, parents, workers, we need to hear you. We need your data and your hearts. Both matter and both guide us. And to my first pups, Liv and Larry, who are home right now with bones and treats, you're the real MVPs. So again, it's a new day in Culver City. Let's meet this moment with courage, with conviction, with a unified vision of what the city can be. And now let's party. Everyone's invited. Across the street, meet in Paris. Oh, before, we do have to close the meeting. But thank you, everyone, for attending. But can I get a motion to close the meeting?
We have a motion by Councilmember O'Brien, a second by Councilmember Vera, to adjourn. Please vote. Please take a moment to vote. All members have voted. The time is nine o'clock exactly, and we are adjourned.